And this is the July 27th work session, seven o'clock. At this time, we will do roll call. Vice Mayor Yasu. Councilman Carroll.
Here.
Councilman Hassan.
Present.
Councilwoman Hopkins.
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Perkins.
Here.
Excellent. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I would, I would like to move to amend the agenda. Uh, to add an item, to allocate at least $10,000 to reimburse, uh, 200 people who get vaccinations in Clarkston with a $50 gift card each to be distributed by the clinics in Clarkston that are giving away, uh, their free vaccinations.
A second that.
I'll move a second that we add an agenda item to discuss, um, gift cards for COVID vaccination. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, may. Motion pass, we will add that as E8. With that being said, we will go over B, which is work session resident comment policy. Any member of the public may address questions or comments to the council referencing only item, agenda items, after the mayor and council have had the opportunity to discuss the agenda item. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments. There are no presentations or administrative business, and so we will move on to O business, which is item D1, public hearing for the variance request from William Braswell Jr. of the Oak Hall Companies LLC for the property located at 3809 East Avenue. Applicant requests deferment from last council meeting. Uh, Ms. Cowie.
Mayor Burke.
Yes.
Yes, uh, Mr. William R. Braswell Jr. of Oak Hall Companies is requesting a varying request on the properly, property, I'm sorry, formerly known as the Gardens of East Avenue to be known as Park Haven on East Avenue. To encroach an additional five feet on lot seven through 30. The previously submitted, um, application variance request was to install ornamental trees in lieu of shade trees. For the installation of solar panels has been withdrawn by the applicant. Thereby moving forward with the request, the encroachment is for an additional five feet on lot seven through 30. With any variance request, granting a variance or variances must adhere to Article 3, Section 308, and not be in contrary to the public interest based on these six criteria. The variance request criteria is there are, is considering there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property in question. Because of its size, shape, or topography. Such conditions are peculiar to the particular piece of property involved. Such conditions are not in the result of the actions of the applicant. A literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance will create an unnecessary hardship. The variance requested will not cause substantial detriment to the public good, nor impair the purposes or intent of the zoning ordinance. And six, the variance is not a request to permit a structure or use of land not authorized in the applicable district. During the previous meetings, ma- uh, Madam Mayor, the board requested additional information from the applicant. The applicant did submit that information in a timely manner to be seen today during today's meeting. And during that recommendation, the planning and zoning board did recommend denying the variance request during their meeting on June the 15th. Madam Mayor, the applicant is here in attendance if you have any additional questions.
You, uh, Ms. Cowie, we're gonna go ahead and just open it up for the public hearing. And again, for the public hearing, we will allow the community the opportunity to speak and they will have three minutes for, um, their comments. And so at this time, Mr. Gomez, did we have anyone signed up for, uh, public comments?
We have Mr. Medford.
Mr. Medford, please speak.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I'd say follow along with what planning and zoning said. Um, they've probably done a good, pretty, pretty good job analyzing everything. I agree with what their statement is. Um, frankly, creating your own hardship is not a hardship. So I'd say deny it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone else?
Mr. Moore, Dean Moore.
Uh, yes, um, I, I agree that, uh, the Planning, Zoning Commission has, uh, recommended not approving this variance, and, uh, I think that we follow their, their lead on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone else scheduled to speak?
The, I could not locate, but I have your name here. Victoria Webb, did you want to speak?
Oh, yes. Hi, this is Victoria. Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, cuz I had problems last night at a Zoom meeting, so I'm glad to see you, Miss, Madam, um, Mayor, and Mr. Gomez, and everyone else that I know on Shawana, and it's great to see y'all. I, I was going to speak on the trees, but I see that that has been withdrawn, so. Me or someone else? Um, so I will yield my ti- any time that I have to anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone else scheduled to speak?
Those are the only ones that I had who signed up to.
I signed up to speak.
Okay, Mr. Hadlock.
Yeah, I would, um, say that it's, it's very important for the council to remain consistent with the, uh, recommendations of the P and, County and zoning commission and the staff on this and on zoning issues in general. I know we've got a couple of members on the council who want to try to form compromises that, that saves everybody, and I urge you to, uh, abandon that, uh, that, uh, because of the do that, and, and all of you, please be consistent and understand the importance of, of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hadlock. Mr. Gomez, it was, is there anyone else?
Not that I'm aware of unless somebody wants to, no one has raised their hand or mentioned anything else.
And, and while we're at it, we want to make sure, if you have not already, please mute your phone unless, um, you are addressed to speak or unless you're a council member. Thank you very much. And if, Mr. Gomez, if you see someone who is not muted, would you please address this at that time too? Thank you. With that being said, we will have Mr. Braswell to speak before the council and provide any additional information he would like at this time. Mr. Braswell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I hope you all are doing well tonight. It's staying dry. It's pretty nasty weather out there today. Um, we did submit some additional information to show how we were, um, meeting the zoning conditions, the all 24 zoning conditions.
What?
So, uh, uh, I hope everybody got that information and had a chance to review it, and I will receive if anybody had any questions on that. Uh, again, we are requesting this variance to be able to go an additional, um, five feet into the front yard setback. It'll go into the greens, uh, between the rows of houses. Um, it will not really affect anybody outside of our development. I believe this is what, um, the Cad County ordinance allows is the eight feet, um, into the, uh, front yard setback. So, um, and we went through the criteria before, um, that we really feel like this will make it a better project. Um, again, it, it doesn't affect anybody else's property. Um, it, it, I think is where the, the zoning code will probably land when it's rewritten. Again, it is what the Cad County requires or allows, and it also, several other jurisdictions we work in allow the same. So, again, we just respectfully request this and, um, just to help make our development a little bit better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. And we'll, we'll open up with questions. I, and I have a couple of questions and we'll open up with the council. Uh, Mr. Braswell, is this the final design plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
And I'll let the council ask any other questions at this time.
I have a question for Ms. Cowie. Should I ask it now or wait if anyone else?
Go ahead. You go ahead, uh, Councilman Carroll.
Okay, Ms. Cowie, I think last time when we had the previous meeting, you were still waiting on some documents. Uh, for Mr. Braswell, have you gotten everything that you need to review or are you still waiting on anything?
That information.
You're echoing, Ms. Cowie.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
The information that was.
You'll echo.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
The information that was requested from, uh, Mr. Braswell from the last meeting, I did receive that information. And I just wanted to make a note that, um, as a part of this request, this is not the final plat submitted, because there will still be some changes to the plat based on the decision that is made based on the variance request. So even though he has submitted the information and has created the checklist based on the previously, um, approved conditions that are on this part, on this parcel, the additional variances will have to be added to that.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, council. Are there any other questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, council, Councilwoman Hopkins.
Um, when we're saying, uh, an additional five feet, that's additional five feet projection into, that's not square footage, no?
No, ma'am. That's five feet into the setback. So it's three feet currently, we would go another five feet. So the porches are typically 10 to 12 feet wide, um, on most of them, so it would be, the square footage would be, you know, five times, you know, 10 would be about 50 square feet. So we did some calculations to show that, um, you know, hydrology wise, we have capacity in our detention system for the additional, uh, impervious area. We have plenty of, of room there. Um, we made all the impervious percentages. Um, so with, with, if, should y'all decide to grant this variance, we would still, it would not impair us from meeting all the existing zoning conditions and/or development codes, uh, in those, those type of things. We would still be within all the, uh, all the regulations. I hope that answered your question.
Okay. I was looking at the, cuz we've just clear cut seven acres of forest uh, above a stream at that location. So all of that, uh, water filtration is now gone. And every, you know, square foot of impermeable surface there is that much less water that's gonna be filtered. We just had another major spillage, um, the 27th, yeah, this, this past week, yesterday as a matter of fact, uh, near Clarkston because of poor water drainage. So it's, it's very much a concern, and if we're talking about 50 to 60 square feet per house for houses number seven through 30, so for 23 houses on six acres, that is a lot more impermeable surface, again, with no filtration above the stream. So I do find it concerning.
I think that we, we have, when we designed the detention system, where there's, there's, we could have a lot more impervious area than what we're planning on and what we're showing. So we have installed the filter system and the, 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 we've done the water quality, downstream protection and detention, all those things that are required for way more impervious area than we're gonna have. Based on what the engineer did and what he sent in. So we have actually additional, to meet the minimum or the maximum impervious area coverage per lot, we could do considerably more than what we're planning on doing. So I think that we've got the, um, the concerns of, of the, of any additional, you know, the system was designed for way more impervious area than we're gonna have. So I think we cover that, you know, we, we meet all the rules and regulations of the state, county, and the city of, of Clarkston, regulations on water filtration and water quality.
Uh, Councilwoman Johnson?
A question. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you, Laura brought up a point, and you basically said that you needed three plus five, which is a total of eight. Code allows you three. What is the need for the additional five? Again, I, I don't know if I over, I don't know.
Well, it, it, it allows us to make the front porches bigger. So, um, in the home designs that we have, um, to meet, the market needs it what we have and what, what, what we've determined to be the market over the last year while we've been developing it. It's sort of changed, and so to be, bigger front porches on the homes, um, we need the additional square footage.
And this is basically in the rear. The rear is the front from the design you showed us the last.
Yeah, so I think to clarify that, the, the, the front of the house is, the front yard setbacks, really the street side or the alley side. This is really being considered a rear yard intrusion.
And this is to allow for the garages, not the carports that were initially asked for. Is that correct?
So, um, I think that was the wording and one of the conditions was that we would have room for a, for two cars behind the carport. We actually built in garages, but we do have room for the two cars, which was the intent of the, um, the condition, I believe.
Okay, that's to guest parking. The guest parking pad is still there off the garage parking.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So we have two parking spaces in the garage and then two part guest spaces behind the garage.
And, and I guess I had a question just for clarification, and I don't know if this is Ms. Cowie or Mr. Quinn. If, for example, the condition number 19, and I think that's what Councilwoman Johnson was referring to, is changed on some of the units. What does that do in terms of the overall conditions that were applied initially for this project?
Well, it would change those conditions. Uh, it would be like a partial change of the conditions that would be applicable to the area or the unit that the council identified as, uh, approving the variance for.
What you mean is if now we see some of the units with garages that we initially said they were all going to be carports, I just wanna make sure, um, so that we're all on the same page as far as steps that need to occur, um, for this type of change.
So. Well, I mean, the step would be granting the variance, but it's, it's not clear to me that the carport to garage change has been requested, or maybe I'm misunderstanding. It sounded like the variance that was still on the table being requested was for additional, uh, impervious area that would be used for porches.
Right. But the design that we have has garages on it, and, and so Mr. Braswell was saying that this is a, a part approval having in terms of what he submitted.
And I can clarify, uh, when we, you know, when the zoning, original zoning was done, that we were really talking about the two parking spaces. Whether it was a, I never paid attention to the garage or carports, whether we were gonna have one or the other in the final architecture. Um, I don't know if there's a, if there's a definition of garage or carport in the city ordinance. But, uh, you know, really the intent of that condition was not that all, all homes have a carport or have a garage. The intent of that condition, uh, was the way I understood it when we were going through the process, was to make sure there was two guest parking spaces outside of the parking spaces provided in, for the, for the house. So I didn't read the condition as being all houses must have a carport or all houses must have a garage. Um, that's not the way, uh, uh, we interpreted that. Um, and I don't know if that's for the city attorney to clarify that whether or not a house has, I mean, I don't know what, you know. Again, it was preliminary designs that we had for the homes at the time, uh, and those have changed since then, but, um, you know, it doesn't change the pervious area of anything. It doesn't change the, you know, it's just the, the home design, so. Um, you know, in, anyway, that, that to me, I thought that the, the intent of the mayor council at the time of that condition was more about visitor parking spaces. We didn't talk, we never really talked about carports versus garages.
The conditions were in writing though, correct? The 29 conditions for the last variance that you requested, but
24 conditions.
It sounds like we're assuming some of those conditions away for this next variance. But they were written down, correct?
Yes, they're written conditions.
Mr. Braswell. Mr. Braswell, just, just so you know, I, I would love to make sure we could see your face. I can just see your shoulder. So just, I don't know if you recognize that with your camera.
I'm looking at the wrong computer. I'm sorry.
Not a problem. Not a problem. Thank you so much. There you go. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I was looking at the wrong screen.
That's okay. I know you were intense in, in everything. That's okay. I just wanted to make sure. Um, so, okay, so dealing with the issue of the variance and, and, and what you are requesting today. Um, council, did you have any other questions as it relates to, uh, the setbacks or anything in terms of the additional, um, footage requested? Madam Mayor? Yes, yes, Ms. Cowie.
There, um, for the record, I did want to make mention that there is a definition of carport in our ordinance. And I can define that if we have time, but I just wanted to make sure that you are aware that there is a defined, um, definition for a carport.
Okay.
And it distinguishes between a garage and a carport.
Okay, okay.
And I would just add that, uh, now that I understand the mayor's question, I mean, there is a Georgia case that says that if there's any ambiguity in the drawings, uh, or, or basically that the written conditions control over the drawings if they're at a discrepancy. And so I don't have the written conditions in front of me, but if they say carport, then it means carport. And, um, that doesn't mean that the council couldn't approve the change, but I do think that that's what it means.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to make sure that was clear, um, especially since people are looking at the design, um, so that we're all on the same page. And, um, so I just want to double check any other questions from the council.
I have one more question. Go ahead.
Yes.
Uh, Ma- Madam Mayor, I just want to quickly, uh, ask, uh, Mr. Braswell. Again, uh, we've had a whole month, and in between then and now, if you can, uh, clearly tell the council and, and the mayor, what are the hardships that you're facing that you're, uh, that you want them to be waived for? I wanna know specifically, this is the hardship that I will have if I don't get this, um, waiver. Thank you.
The specific hardship would be that, you know, we designed these homes to meet the market, and after we, you know, designed the site to the different, there was hardships originally in the original design, and there was hardships for the original, um, variances that were granted that we went through. Um, this hardship would be that we, we need to have, you know, it's to have better marketable product that can compete with our, with the surrounding product in the areas that are around us in DeKalb County that can have the full-size car, or porches. That's the hardship, we believe.
Uh, thank you for your answer, and, um, I think that kind of answers my question on this, because that is not a hardship. I think that is, uh, um, to, in order to approve the hardships, we have clear criteria that it would impact the development. But this doesn't seem it's gonna impact the development, uh, from the city's point of view. Um, I don't see hardship, uh, and I understand it's, it, it will be probably a, a market inconvenience the way I see it, not a hardship. So thank you for your answer.
Councilman Carroll, you had a question?
Yes, there was some discussion about the impervious ground earlier, so maybe I just can't visualize the deck. But is the ground underneath it going to be pervious or impervious? Is it gonna be like a concrete foundation, or what is, what, what are we talking about in the deck?
Yeah, we, um, on most of these pet porches, there will be, uh, built-of-wood decks, and then there will be, um, you know, uh, impervious area, I mean pervious area below that, it'll be dirt below the, uh, under the deck. Some of them will be, uh, concrete. Uh, but again, we have more than enough addition, I mean, impervious area calculated into the detention pond that we originally designed. We owe, we way overdesigned the detention system. We typically do that. Um, but so that, where do we have, you know, with the current design of the infiltration and water quality and downstream protection and detention system that we have, we have way more, we could, we could have a lot more impervious area on the site than what we will be, what we currently would be able to have and what we would have with the additional front porches.
Questions from the council?
Madam Mayor, I would just like to make the comment now. The footprints of the actual house has increased from the original plan as well, from what I understand. So what is creating this necessity to have a larger footprint for a larger, for, for a respectable-sized porch is because the house has grown, which has cut into porch space, correct? Like if the house were a smaller size, as was the original plan, then having a six-square-foot porch wouldn't be a problem, correct?
Yes, I mean, we, we have to completely redesign the houses and make them smaller and make them probably wider. Cuz we could be wider on most of the lots than what we are, so.
Well, well, those were the size of the houses in the original plan that was brought forward, so.
Right. We had, I mean, we had run some conceptual plans at the time we did it, but just, you're right, we can redesign the houses to make it. But my, you know, my thought process is that it, it really, this hurts nobody outside of our development. Um, the front porch is being another five feet bigger. It makes us compete with the, the market around Clarkston. Um, and we're, you know, we're, we're asking for this variance, and if you, so we respectfully just ask for the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and Mr. Medford got to my question before I can ans- ask it. So with all the changes, Mr. Braswell, what has that done with your price point to, for the houses?
We're still about where we said we were gonna be, the mid threes.
So increasing it, so, 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 okay, we got 30-something homes of that you probably will have like maybe five or six that are in the threes, and then the rest will go to the fours and then go up. Is that?
All of them will start off in the, um, probably 360, 375 range, and then where the market takes it, we don't know. I think, I think they're gonna stay right around there. I think there's a, uh, a ceiling to that, what that market will go for. If you look at the development just on the other side of, uh, 78 on Montreal that Minerva's building, uh, those houses are in the fives and, and, and probably pushing in the sixes, um, just outside of Clarkston. So, um, you know, there's a market for, for new homes in Clarkston, the little tiny house development, those sold for crazy numbers per square foot. Um, you know, and I think in the zoning, uh, town hall meetings you had, that I think there was a lot of the community that said that they wanna have this kind of developed cottage and tiny home development. So it's a popular product, um, and I think that it'll, it'll do well. So. Thank you.
Now, to be clear, what you're talking about is not a cottage or tiny home thing, though. I mean, that would be by definition less than 1,000 square feet total footprint.
I mean, that depends on your definition of a cottage. I mean, it's not a tiny home, no, but it's a cottage. I consider it a cottage.
I think from, from what, I think Councilwoman Hopkins is that we, we have kind of that less than 1,000 for our cottages on that we have here in Clarkston.
I think that's your, your definition is 1,200 square feet. You're correct. I, I'm wrong there, but I just, my, my personal definition of a cottage is around 1,600 to 1,800 square feet, so, um, you know, that's what we're trying to stay to. Um, you know, we really wanted to try to get a master on the main. There's no way to make it fit on the footprint that we have. Um, but we think they'll be nice homes and, and it'd be an addition to Clarkston. Um, you know, so that's, that's what we wanna do.
Council, if, do you have any other questions at this time? Okay. Hearing none. Um, we'll thank you again, Mr. Braswell, uh, for coming out and making the changes and providing that information. and providing that information to Ms. Cowie. We will follow with the next council meeting next week, where we will actually go through another public hearing as well as vote on your requested changes.
Great. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our old business of D one. We will now move to E, which is new business. And that is E one alcohol application for RR Property Group LLC DBA Thrift Town. Mr. Gomez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and everyone attending, listening to this meeting. With the item and before you is for the council to consider a new alcoholic beverage license application. City staff reviewed uh an ownership change for the business located at nine twenty-six Montreal Road, uh, known as the Thrift Town Grocery Store. There is a new owner, RR Property Group LLC, under city code. Uh, the new ownership requires a new application, go through the review process. Uh, and then for a staff review, which then our recommendation is brought forth to the council for their approval or denial. Uh, so far, the applicants have met all of the requirements in our city codes. Uh, we have no objection to them proceeding. Uh, we actually recommend approval of, of the new business to have their alcohol beverage license, beer, wine, and/or malt beverage license. I believe the applicants are on the line if anyone has any question, if the council has any questions of them.
And I think the uh, Mr. Khan, if you would like to speak.
Um, hi, how are you?
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing great. If you wanted to say a few words, it's fine at this time.
Uh, yes, so we are basically applying for uh the alcohol license for uh this, our new store. Yeah, and we already got two more stores. Uh, one is in uh Fisher Industrial Boulevard and the other one is in Gainesville. So, yes, so we are applying for this uh alcohol license.
Great. Well, first, um, let us welcome you into Clarkston. We are excited to have you. I know that Mr. Bill has been there for years, decades, and we are excited to have you to be a part of the Clarkston family. So, thank you for investing in Clarkston. And so at this time, counsel, did you have any questions for our applicant?
I have a question. And um, I'm just wondering, do you live in Clarkston?
Uh, no, I live in Long Island.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not, not a requirement, just curious.
None. Mr. Gomez, do we have any um public comments for this item?
Mr. Medford?
Mr. Medford?
Evening, everybody. Uh, as Mayor Burke said, welcome to Clarkston. Glad to see investment in the community. Um, a very his historic building and business in the center of Clarkston. So, y'all are going to be taking over uh one of the probably well, most well-known businesses in Clarkston. So, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Excited to see uh what you bring to it in the future. Um, looks like there was already a permit in place, so there's no reason to not continue with the alcohol permit. Uh, did y'all buy just Thrift Town or did you grab the whole parcel?
Oh, no, it's the whole, yeah, it's the.
I just want, I didn't know if this would, does this, if the license goes for the entire location, like the whole address or just Thrift Town Grocery Store itself?
No, the, the grocery store. Yeah.
Oh, it's okay. I, I thought, I thought it would just be it. So, uh, but yeah, no, this is uh exciting and uh congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you once again.
Mr. Gomez, anyone else?
That was all that signed up. No one has their hand raised.
Outstanding. Well, Mrs. Khan, thank you so much. Um, we will vote on this agenda item next week. And we look forward to seeing you. And again, we thank you for being a part of the Clarkston family. So, we're done for tonight, so you can come next week.
Okay, thank you so much. And we are excited to work with you guys.
Okay, you take care. Have a good one.
You too. Thank you.
All right. That closes E one. We will now move to E two, which is to discuss Market Street sidewalk construction options. Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, Mayor. This item regarding our proposed Market Street sidewalk options, uh, we uh with our engineering firm, Collaborative Infrastructure Services, uh, we were looking to utilize an existing uh option that we, in reviewing a little bit more information and, and pondering a little bit, we are, uh, what this item was proposing was to utilize essentially a, the existing contractor at the existing Roland Street construction project, um, a different construction project than this Market Street sidewalk and to utilize the change order. We are, uh, we are not recommending that uh anymore. We are, after discussing uh with Mr. Quinn, we are proposing that we go through a, a formal construction bid process. Uh, so that option is really no longer an option. Uh, that's what we were proposing, but again, thinking a little bit more about that, we are, this, this Market Street sidewalk is a separate project. It always has been. Uh, so we feel a lot more comfortable uh putting it out to bid rather than as a change order. It, it's not completely the same as the Roland Street and certainly not the original um Roland Street project, which was the, the road diet. Um, all we're, you know, again, doing with Market Street will be to uh mill and pave the road and then add sidewalks uh all the way from City Hall Annex um all the way down to the city street line, um, just north of Jamison Place. But likely we will continue all the way down to connect to where the city limit line ends with uh a, either with a proposed private development on the corner of Jamison and Market. Uh, and then have the county reimburse the city for the part that will be in the unincorporated part. We have a meeting scheduled with county staff this Friday onsite to review uh what we are proposing to do and we will share all the information with the county and and essentially just look for the county to approve our plan, the design, the site plan, all of the work. And then the county would reimburse the city for the portion that is in the unincorporated area. Uh, we've had, we held a meeting with residents onsite. We walked the entire uh proposed construction area. Uh, really what the o- options that we discussed last month as to where to place the sidewalk. Uh, really, it appears that we would, the sidewalk would be placed essentially on the road. Uh, and it would, again, reduce the road width from twenty-four to twenty-one feet, um, including and it would add an eighteen-inch grass, uh, beauty strip, uh, et cetera, and relocate the existing granite curb. Uh, that seemed to be a little bit more, more in favor of that option versus the other one, which was placing it behind the existing curb. Uh, and option one would be a little bit less expensive. Um, a- again, the agenda item to discuss, lists the next steps. And again, we, we're no longer proposing that we issue a change order. We're simply going to issue a bid for this project. So, a lot of what's in here uh is really no longer uh relevant. But we wanted to give you the background of, of what ha- happened, especially since our last meeting, where we again held the onsite meeting on July the thirteenth with residents. We will work with the county again to incorporate uh the unincorporated part, not to incorporate or bring into Clarkston, but to ensure that the project includes the unincorporated area so that it is, so that all of Market Street is improved and the sidewalk is extended all the way throughout until the end of Market Street. And since we will be bidding this, we are trying to get to move along with this process and issue a bid fairly quickly. So, we hope to have something back, uh, if not by the August work session, by the September work session for a, a vote on a proposed contract by the, uh, again, at the very latest, by the October uh council meeting. So, be happy to answer any questions. I don't think Mr. Kaiser engineers on the call, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. So, I'm, sorry, before.
I'm here.
Oh, Larry, you're on?
Yes.
Okay, uh, but before we proceed, uh, I did want to mention, so there is no vote uh for the council next week. Um, we are going to go ahead and issue a bid for the project. Uh, Larry, was there anything you wanted to add?
No, only that if we can, if I can get, get this done by the end of the week, we'll have an opportunity to uh have a bid open on the twenty-seventh of um August, which will give the city manager just a few days to put it on the agenda for a work session at the end of August, which will then go in September, um, council vote. If we don't make that for some reason, then we have to wait one additional month.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Uh, counsel, since this is just for FY information purposes only, did you have any additional questions?
Madam Mayor, yes, I have a quick.
Yes, Vice Mayor Yassin.
Um, so if we don't annex the um, the sidewalk part of the county, um, it's good that they considering um reimbursing us, but how about maintaining that area? Is it going to be left to the county or the city?
The county will, likely we will enter into an agreement with the county to maintain it. Uh, that's really not going to be an issue. We, we already maintain in various parts of, of our jurisdiction, of just outside of our boundaries, we maintain some of the right of way because the county is just MIA.
And I just, um, uh, my own opinion, uh, I'm actually puzzled to hear that um, there was a consideration to do a change of order before even bringing this to the council. And I'm glad that it's going to be bid, but I hope that we never do this bef- ever again. I mean, there is no point on um, on telling the council that there was going to be a proposal to to just do a change of order without even consulting with the council.
That's what we're doing right now, councilman. We're bringing to share all the information of what we were looking to do. We're not, as I stated, we're not doing it, but that's what I'm bringing before you right now and the explanations behind it.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Yassin. Any other questions from the council?
Question, but it's more of a comment. Is it okay if I?
Councilman Carol?
Okay, Councilwoman Hopkins and I did walk uh the length of Market Street uh when they did that tour. And I think there were about twenty-five residents that joined at various points along the walk. I think the consensus was definitely for going to three feet into the street. I don't think anyone spoke that wanted to go three feet further back in the property lines. The thing I would say is that there was definitely consensus for adding two more of the little roundabouts. Uh, once you talk to the people that were actually living on the street, I think everyone wanted one more above the curb and then one more further down Market Street. And I don't think anyone disputed from that. I think everyone agreed that that would make their project safer. Councilwoman Hopkins, add, add anything that she took, took away from the neighbors. That was my takeaway.
I would be inclined to disagree on that last point. Um, when it came down to the subject of taking down trees to put in a roundabout, I think people, I was hearing people say they'd rather have a speed table or speed bumps than take down more trees for uh easeabouts. So, perhaps, perhaps we could look into that deeper because I might have been speaking to different residents than you were, but um,
There were about thirty people there.
Whether or not it involved removing trees for it.
Okay. Well, thank you both for your observations from what you saw. So, I appreciate that. Any other comments from the council? Thank you, counsel. Mr. Gomez, did anyone sign up for this item?
We have Mr. Medford again.
Medford.
Uh, yeah, so I just wanted to chime in with uh the options and say that as a resident who is currently watching everything come together here on Roland Street, uh, the amazing swiftness that this crew has been working at. And it hasn't been just slapdash either. I actually spent some years in construction, so this has not just been hacked together. Uh, the, the, the resetting of the curbs, but also watching them narrow the street was brilliant. They cut a line down the road, pulled back the asphalt and then moved the existing curb stones over. They started that a few days ago and they're already pouring sidewalks. They probably poured another sixty feet of sidewalk today. Um, and they compacted everything underneath. The soil prep looked all correct. Lots of concrete holding everything in, new aprons for the sidewalk, I mean, for the driveways. Uh, it really is, and I've already noticed, even with, when the construction crews are gone, uh, and this crew cleans up after themselves, by the way, complete with a leaf blower blowing dirt out of the, the street. So, uh, but when, when there are no crews present, traffic has slowed down. The narrowing of the street is forcing the drivers, especially when there's somebody else coming the other way, they absolutely have slowed down. Uh, there's also been an improvement in the drainage flow, especially in the area of the easeabout. The area where the curb on Wagner has cut in, that, that extra few feet of curb movement now allows the water to hug the right, the correct side of the road and not flow over the crown of the road and flood the downhill residents. So, the easeabout, even though it's not even there yet, has already helped in the drainage and flow of our street. Uh, I won't lie, there have been some hiccups here and there, but Larry and his team have been fantastic in making everything happen. So, um, I have no idea if, I'm guessing at the rate they're going, it'll just be a few more weeks till we're done with the sidewalk through here. But uh definitely, the solution of narrowing the road is working extremely well. So, uh, that's just my, anybody who wants to talk to me about what I'm seeing every day or come take a look at it. I got pictures I've been taking to document it and show uh some people. Uh, feel free to talk. Uh, so, yeah. But it's been great. Hopefully, we can bring the same thing to Market Street quickly. Hopefully, just make this happen on Market Street quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your observation. We really appreciate your um, letting us know how the project is coming along. So, thank you very much. Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone else?
Yes, Warren Hadlock.
Mr. Hadlock. Mr. Hadlock? I'll say it two more times. Mr. Hadlock.
I didn't see myself for a minute there. I'm sorry. I had to unmute myself.
Just talk a little clearer because is, 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 you kind of muffled.
Can you hear me better now?
That's a little better. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
I moved my uh camera. Uh, no, I, I didn't really have anything on this. I think as long as the neighbors are adequately consulted and that, uh, and, and we minimize the tree cutting, uh, those are the two most important things. And uh, it's great if uh the people are doing a great job, as Brian said. I don't know that they are, but I, you know, I have no reason to believe that they're not, but of course, we do need the bid process. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hadlock. Uh, Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone else?
No, Mayor, I don't see anyone else.
All right. With that being said, we will close this agenda item and move to E three, which is to discuss an, an electronic vehicle charging station license agreement with Georgia Power to install electronic vehicle charging stations in the city of Clarkston. And Ms. Cowie? Ms. Cowie? Ms. Cowie?
Madam Mayor, can you, I'm here.
I can. Thank you.
Great. I am so excited to announce the discussion for our electric vehicle charging stations with Georgia Power. Um, tonight, we're going to discuss that um, the city enter into a charging station lease agreement with Georgia Power that will allow for Georgia Power to install an electric vehicle charging station for the public usage at no cost to the city or the public. Georgia Power and city staff reviewed and discussed the installation of various electronic vehicle charging stations on city property. And there were four recommended locations and those locations were Thrift Town, it was one at Refuge Coffee, City Hall Annex actually, but the chosen location based on safety was City Hall right next to the police station. Georgia Power will have access to the premises for construction, installation, maintenance, repair, operation, and the use for charging station of the charging station with customers having access to the area twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And the city will provide the space to Georgia Power also at no cost. And the city will provide the space to Georgia Power also at no cost. And the plug-in, the plug-in electric vehicles license agreement is an irrevocable ten-year commitment. Madam Mayor?
And I just want to say, thank you, Ms. Cowie. I know you have been working on this for a while. You were working on this before I was even mayor. I remember talking about this for several, almost feels like several years now. So thank you for all the work and especially having something where it is no cost to the city. So at this time, council, did you have any additional questions for Ms. Cowie or the staff?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Hassan.
I want to thank you, Ms. Cowie, because last time we discussed on this item, my concern was the safety. But now the right, it's the right location, and I'm happy that, that to be materialized with the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
I just want to thank as well, Ms. Cowie as well, and city manager for their discussion. I'm glad to see the fruition of also the work that the environment committee has been also supporting this idea. And so it's great. I think there is a, this is a great leap towards, you know, getting towards environmentally responsible, sustainable growth that we would like to see in our city. So I hope this is just the beginning, and we definitely would like to continue doing this more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? And I see Councilwoman Hopkins.
On the idea of this just being the beginning, I have a question for Ms. Cowie. I don't know if it was discussed at all, but doesn't the city own that tiny spot of land that's about a couple of parking spaces wide by the family dollar behind the, the shopping center there where the Briani Point is?
Yes, we do.
Was that considered at all for this?
Project? It wasn't, Councilwoman Hopkins, it wasn't at that time because you're looking at access and location. And the mainly, the most traveled location is that Market Street East Pont area. So that's why the location was chosen by the police station.
Okay. Do you think it might be considered in the future if we should need some more of these?
I will make sure I reach out to them and see if that location is feasible.
To the, to the entire council, we've, that parcel has been used for construction in the last three years. Now that the construction is finished, if you walk or drive by there, it's been, the area has been leveled. We really haven't determined what that will be or even if, if we need that parcel. But yes, it could be considered as part of either regular parking or for electronic charging stations, or we again dispose of it and just have it as private parking, et cetera. We just haven't made any, any recommendations to council, but we, we will, and we are open for suggestions. That is a very good one to possibly include the EV, additional EV pumps there. Also to add to the, the current, the proposed location for safety, one, it is very well lit at night, especially since we added additional lighting to the City Hall Police Station building on the exterior, as well as the decorative lights that are on across the street on Market Street from where the spaces will be. Additionally, that area is monitored. There are cameras on there twenty-four hours a day. So, and again, if somebody is, you know, wanting to walk on the path, they'll have the access to the path or to get right to, again, the city center. I mean, that's available. So, but safety and the fact that police vehicles will be going in and out of there, at least for the next few years, also just an additional safety benefit.
Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor, one more, one more addition to that. We did discuss, there was a minimum requirement of the insurance that was listed in the, in the lease agreement. And we also discussed that with the city attorney, and I just wanted him to know as well that, that, that amount has been reduced to an amount that the city can work with.
And is there a charge? What is, is there a charge for people to charge their car?
We don't know that information as of yet, Mayor Burks, but we will get that information for the public.
Right, but the idea is that it will be free to the public because we are not charging Georgia Power or whoever their sub, whoever does the installation or the owners of the actual equipment. We are not charging them anything. So conversely, the idea is that, that they, they're just offered for free to the public.
And thank you. And okay, so just, just to make sure, let's, before we vote, let's make sure we have that clear, clear.
Madam Mayor, I just want to.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Quick question. I, and I'm pretty sure the police department has been consulted, and I hope they're not going to take two spaces of their limited parking.
We, we will be able to accommodate all of our police vehicles for their parking.
Okay, all right. Any other comments?
Yes, that's one of their question. And are there any city vehicles that are there? Now, for any private vehicles, city employees, or do we know that yet?
Can you restate your question because your, your, your phone was trapped.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, I was saying.
Are there, were there, are there any city, city vehicles or vehicles of city employees that would be able to be charged by this? Or do we know that information yet?
We do not currently have any city in our fleet, any city vehicles. We do not have any in our fleet that are electric that would benefit from the charging. As far as our personal vehicles, I'm not aware of any. I honestly have seen, I think maybe two vehicles on here. So I don't, two electric vehicles in my time in Clarkston. I just have seen very many throughout the Atlanta area. But I'm sure they're, I mean, they're out there, I'm sure. I think I can't, I can't remember his name, but I think he has one, the gentleman that worked, Mr. Bollinger, I think, has an electric vehicle that I've seen around here.
Electric vehicles. So, so this is going to be a great addition. So you can charge up your car while you enjoy the path. So we are very excited about this. And so again, thank you for all the work.
Comments, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
I would strongly encourage, I'm not sure who does it, but maybe we could add on the exit on Church Street that we have an electric charging location. Maybe if, if it is available at the exit, that people would know where in Clarkston they could find, or also add it to our city's website or basically to let people know that there is a charging location within the city limit. So, so people know where exactly it is.
Outstanding. We will definitely promote it as much as possible.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for that point. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll close this agenda item and move. I, I did let everyone speak, Mr. Gomez. Do we have anyone else signed up for this? We're good with this item?
Mr. Moore, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Moore?
Oh yes, if we could position the charging stations so they're visible from the bike path. I think that would also help with the advertising as people ride by on their bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that being said, and public comments, we will end that item and move on to E four, which is Women's Equity Day Proclamation, and that would be me. So what we wanted to make sure is on August twenty-sixth, and that is Women's Equity Day. And that is an opportunity for us to recognize the Nineteenth Amendment, which gave women the right to vote. And so with that, you know, we're getting ready for election season, and we're getting ready to make sure that we're getting people registered to vote, but also to have the discussion, discussion about ensuring that we have equality for women. And so with that, we definitely want to make sure that we recognize this because of everything we had with COVID, and last year was the hundredth anniversary of women's suffrage. The National Women's History Alliance continues the theme of valiant women of the vote, refusing to be silent and continue to celebrate the suffrage of the centennial. And so we just want to make sure in terms of bringing awareness of this, of the Nineteenth Amendment, but also making sure that we do ceremonies and activities that work to secure and expand equal rights today, such as supporting women businesses, creating mentoring programs for business owners and women employees, and bringing equality activities at the workplace. And so it's just a recognition of that. Any other comments from the council? Okay. Any comments from the public, Mr. Gomez?
None.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that being said, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is E five, National Senior Citizens Day Proclamation. So that's me again. And so we are recognizing our wonderful seniors who, again, make the difference in our community. And when you look at our population in terms of the seniors, we are extremely excited to make sure that we recognize the people who've made a legacy for us to follow. And so on August twenty-first, that is Senior Citizens Day. And we just want to make sure that we, we recognize those people who are our senior citizens and do those things to ensure that we provide support for them as well. And so again, one of the things that's important to recognize is that for those that are considered sixty-five to the U.S. Census Bureau, we'll have seventy-eight million people sixty-five and over in twenty thirty-five. And so that is going to be the first time in terms of that number being significantly high. And so again, this is just a simple way to say, we recognize you, we support you. We're getting ready to have our wonderful Stern Center Senior Living Facility. And so we just want to make sure we recognize our seniors for that. Any comments from the council? Nope. Okay, hearing none. Mr. Gomez, do we have any comments from the public?
No.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll close that item and move to E six, which is the fiftieth anniversary of the Twenty-Sixth Amendment proclamation, and that would be me as well. And, you know, we, we kind of changed our agenda for the July meeting. And so I had the opportunity to talk to a wonderful young lady, and her name is Christina Reagan. And she brought to my attention the point that this is the fiftieth anniversary of the Twenty-Sixth Amendment, where we changed the voting age from twenty-one to eighteen. And so with that being said, we are trying to make sure that we encourage young people to vote. And with that, I see Ms. Reagan, would you please have the opportunity to speak and tell everyone about yourself?
Yes, thank you so much. I greatly appreciate you guys letting me come and talk today. My name's Christina. I am a student. I'm going into my junior year of college. Sorry, my cat's kind of getting in the way. But I work for the Student Perms. We are a nonpartisan, nonprofit, student-run organization. We are across the United States, working on different college campuses, including several in Georgia, to work on student engagement, as well as other public research interests. And so one of my role is, as a student, the Southern spokesperson for our New Voters Project. This summer, I took on the challenge of not only reaching out to schools all across the South, but also to different city councils to engage them in kind of like this dialogue around the Twenty-Sixth Amendment, because it has been fifty years since eighteen to twenty-year-olds got the right to vote. And it wasn't until this general election in twenty twenty that we increased the voter turnout for young people, eighteen to twenty-nine, to higher than it's ever been since this amendment was passed. And so it was ratified on July fifth by President Nixon. After all of this student work and student protest across the country to get the right to vote for students, using that slogan, "Old enough to fight, old enough to vote," around the Vietnam War. And so it's super important for me, as a student, as a young person, as a nineteen-year-old, to be able to vote and see city councils across the country, and across the South especially, engage in discussion around why voter empowerment is so important for young people. Because we are the people that are going to be stepping up and taking, taking over. So thank you guys so much for letting me come and talk about this amendment. It's super important to me, and I really, really appreciate you guys discussing it.
Thank you, Ms. Reagan. And again, we are very excited to make sure that we encourage our young adults to vote and bring that awareness of the importance for them to vote. So I'm very happy to make sure that we work with that in not only recognizing the Twenty-Sixth Amendment, but also the Nineteenth Amendment. So thank you again. And council, did you have any other comments?
Madam Mayor?
Vice Mayor Yasu.
Thank you. Well, I certainly like to get always more educated about the history of this. And in light of this, I really, I mean, I know some countries actually even allow sixteen-year-olds to vote. So I think it's always good to try to push the envelope just a little bit more every time. And but at the same time, my son, he's about seventeen, and he's very excited that he will get registered when he reaches seventeen and a half. So we, we need to do, go reach out and improve our reach out to young fellows using this opportunity of the proclamation. And we definitely need to educate our youth about the importance of voting and the importance of being engaged in the community, especially in our new American communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, did you have any other comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I would just to thank Ms. Reagan for coming. I get really excited when I see young people want to be engaged. I think the first political rally I ever went to had people there that were veterans of the McGovern campaign back in the seventies, as well as high school students who had never had the opportunity to vote yet, but they were very excited. So in a city where we talk a lot about diversity, age diversity really matters as well because all of those groups do bring something different. And the energy of young people and the idealism is always inspiring. It gets everyone going, and I really appreciate what you're doing. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone else?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Reagan, again, for reaching out to me and making sure that we actually celebrated this. I told you, we had our council meeting. I said, but we were not going to go without celebrating this day. And so thank you for your follow-up and thank you for all that you're doing to get your people, young people, involved and engaged and keep up the great work. Thank you. And with that being said, we will close this agenda item and.
I, I would like to make a comment. Okay, I've got a little interruption here with the dog. Let me call him in briefly. But I just want to say that when we changed that law, we had circulated petitions. We had addressed the Congress. We had a lot of peaceful protests in Washington, D.C. And so when I turned eighteen, I was able to vote for the first time in nineteen seventy-two. I voted every time since. We also were able to lower the drinking age to eighteen. So we were on a fifty-fifty success rate. That was a bad idea, I think. But it's, it's, it's a great to, it's really great to see how you really can affect the government and how things change. And, and it's interesting that today we're, we're seeing the Select Committee having the hearing testimonies on the insurrection against the government. Uh, having the hearing testimonies on the insurrection against the government. Um, by a, a racist, despicable group of people. And um, and I'm, I'm really proud that the government is moving forward on doing the investigation in spite of the obstructionist. In the Republican Party and uh, support the Democrats. And I hope that. Everybody's paying attention to what's going on because we came very close to losing our, our freedom and our democracy. So, uh, keep on voting, get as many people out there to vote and vote for the people of this country. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. And so again, right, Ms. Reagan, thank you for. The work that you're doing and make sure that you continue to reach out, reach out to our schools. We have plenty from our um, HBCUs here. As well as Georgia State, Georgia Tech, and all the other institutions around. Thanks again. Okay, with that being said, we will close this agenda item and we will move on to E seven, which is to discuss a resolution. To encourage the DOT to add sound barriers between two eighty-five and the city when they add. In an extra lane, and that's Councilman Carroll and Councilman Perkins.
Hey, yes, so we did this good item. As some of you may know, the Department of Transportation is on the. The process of adding additional lane around twenty-five that will be told. And when we've contacted uh, Congressman Johnson in the past to ask about sound barriers, we've been told that. That sound barriers will most likely only be put in when they make an addition to the highway, which is reflecting right now. Uh, many of the neighbors on both sides actually have requested sound barriers. There are some sound barriers on the other side. They're disappearing. They may not work that well. There are no sound barriers on the Clarkston side. And many of the neighbors that are nearby there complained about the noise from the highways. Highway that uh, comes into their houses and their backyard. So, this resolution is requesting that Department of Transportation put in uh, some kind of sound barrier if it's geographically feasible. Uh, for that, for that Clarkston side, but hopefully Clarkson can have a little bit less noise for the residents that live really close to twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Perkins. Did you have anything else to add?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I think that that covers it. Um, I received a number of requests from this as well, just from folks that live. Um, I just sent to the interstate. Um, while I do appreciate uh. Being able to hear the ebb and flow of traffic uh, like, like the ocean. Um, it, it does, it is pretty loud, uh, and I'm not even right there uh, next to it. And so a number of people have approached me on this as well. And so I think anything we can do as a council. Uh, just to uh, to, to use our voice and encourage um. The powers that be to uh, to consider this and, and put this along that. Uh, that new uh, expanded lane, uh, I think would be a good move on our part.
And so, uh, council, did you have any other questions about this item? Yes, Vice Mary Yasu.
Thank you. Um, I think uh, I certainly um, agree that we. Need um, sound barriers, um, not just after they add extra lane. But I feel like we do need it even now. Um, so we certainly could um. Could push for it, uh. Um, while they're adding new lanes, but uh, I think regardless if they are and. Or not, we definitely, uh, I think we should always push um, to, to ask. That we get um, extra lanes, I mean, extra s- sound barriers, excuse me. And um, we also need to consider if they don't put a, let's say their walls. We could always, they could always plant more trees. Um, there is really um. Uh, we could use natural barriers, trees that's been getting cut down every time and um. That means whenever they are gonna uh, expand it, that means they're gonna cut more trees, which means less barriers. So, uh, they need to um, they need to justify at least. Whenever they cut new trees, they need to understand that they're gonna add more noise to our residents. So, uh, that would be. Um, more reason to, to have a wall or keep plant more trees if they can, or whenever they're cutting trees. Uh, but I don't know how much we could convince DOT, but um. Uh, I, I certainly uh, agree that we need um, more uh, noise barriers. I've been to uh, I, I remember to an apartment complex um, behind Balaguru. Uh, I don't know the name of that apartment complex on East Ponds and it's really noisy standing out there on the door when you knock in the door. I don't know how they could even hear people because it's really a, a deafening noise in there, uh, that coming from two eighty-five. Uh, so I certainly agree that we need uh, sound barriers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Uh, council, do you have any other comments? Okay, um, Mr. Gomez, did we have anyone else to sign up for this?
No, but I see Mr. Moore has his hand up, or maybe that's from the prior items.
Oh, no, I'd like to speak.
Oh, and Mr. Medford signed up. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, I was riding my bike across the uh, new uh, bike path, uh, bridge across two eighty-five. And the sound of the tires is deafening. And uh, I would hope that they were going to do this anyway, but I think that uh. Uh, Mr. Perkins and Mr. Carroll are correct in uh, using the power of the council to make that suggestion. It would certainly go a long ways. And I live a long ways from two eighty-five, but I've been aware of the noise ever since I moved here. So it'd be a, a great relief if we could uh, cut back the, the decibels by a few thousand. Thanks.
And Mr. Medford.
Yes, so I remember attending those meetings when the DOT came and showed us off the uh, new lanes that we're gonna put in. Um, and so I do recall there were many residents asking about s- sound walls and not many answers from the DOT about that. Uh, so, from an anecdotal position, I can tell you that. My neighbors across the way put in privacy fences, wooden privacy fences, and the difference in sound attenuation since then has been amazing. Uh, from the train and from traffic. So, there are sound barriers that are effective. Uh, I think we would want to request if possible, maybe the concrete because you'd have less vibration. Those steel ones, I think, might act like actually a. Uh, a radiator possibly even until they get uh, maybe covered with some nice greenery, maybe some good old-fashioned kudzu. Uh, to buffer them a little bit, but definitely, there are some areas in Clarkson that. While the, inside the perimeter area right there next to the exit ramp at two eighty-five has noise attenuation walls. Uh, I believe we kind of got the short end of the stick when they cleared out all the trees on the outside of the perimeter. And cleared that gully down in there. I think we lost some sound attenuation through there. So definitely, this is a, a timely request. Uh, they know they haven't struck ground on this yet, but now is the time to ask. And as I agree with the wet. Uh, it never hurts to ask and to ask for more while they're gonna be out there. If they're gonna have the shovels out there and they're gonna be building. Um, there's no reason why we can't have those nice concrete squared um, noise barriers like they haven't done, Woody. So, we have, we deserve those too. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment. All they can do is say no. Amen. So with that being said, if there are no other comments, we'll go ahead and close this out. And I guess the other piece is I can also check with Representative. Um, Hank Johnson, because I know that he had some projects that they were um, looking to do. And maybe make sure that he also knows about our concern about doing this as well. So maybe he can help out with this. And with that being said, we will move to E eight, which is related to the cards for um, vaccination. COVID vaccinations. Councilman Carroll.
So, we just this week, yeah, I believe received the stimulus funds from the ARP funding. And of course. You know, the primary use of that funding is to try to mitigate and to deal with the effects that COVID has had in our community. And so, one thing that DeKalb County is doing is that they are offering for the first hundred participants at some of the mass vaccination sites, they're offering fifty-dollar. Debit cards. And I've talked to some of the, I've talked to some of the Clarkson clinics. Some of them have offered twenty-dollar cards or have done raffles. And they've said it's had some effect, but not, you know, a game-changing effect, but they are hopeful that a fifty-dollar card will have more effect. Um, so, you know, it may not be a total game changer, but anything we can do to increase the vaccination numbers. Considering how COVID has really had a huge effect in our community, I think is important. Obviously, this is what the ARP stimulus funds are designed for. Uh, so I think that at least starting with ten thousand, I'd be open to going higher if the council desired. Um, to encourage people to get vaccinated by offering incentive of a fifty-dollar gift or debit card. That could be given out to the various clinics that are doing the free vaccinations in Clarkson. Could be a good way to help make sure that more people get vaccinated and we can eventually defeat COVID.
And thank you, Councilman Carroll. Um, and for this piece, I know that when we initially talked about uh, the COVID funding. I'd put down um, seventy-five thousand for uh, health-related items. And so, to, to Councilman Carroll's point, I would hope and I've asked the council. Um, to maybe think about doing the seventy-five thousand so that we can. Move forward with some of the preventative measures in terms of health. Um, Georgia State is doing some projects right now. And we're looking at doing um, where we are doing preventative. Help with residents in the apartment complexes and some of the other areas. To make sure as a result of some of the things we've seen with COVID and also encourage people to wear their masks, get vaccinated. And to also look at how they are um, addressing some of the health disparities that are currently facing our communities. That make people more susceptible um, to COVID as well. So hopefully, um, as far as this, maybe um, as a council, you might consider that um, initial amount that I had. As, as far as the seventy-five thousand. So, uh, council, Vice Mary Yasu.
Um, I also have a one, um, well, not really a concern, but um. One thing that we probably need, could consider is, um. Do the people have to live in the city limit or how are they gonna check if, um, because I know the, the clinics serve. I mean, people from throughout DeKalb County, maybe more beyond that as well. People who don't have insurance, they could probably come from Gwinnett County or not. I mean, I'm just saying. Um, uh, we need to also think about how is this gonna apply? Is this gonna be only for? Um, people who live within the city limit or people who live within three zero zero two one. Um, so. I'm, I'm just saying, there could be some other things that could also be, but um, this is just something that comes to my mind. If we're gonna uh, consider doing that. And I also agree, um, uh, I mean, ten thousand, we could. Already, uh, there has been things that were appropriated for food, uh. Since this is a card, we could certainly be give our people whenever they're. Um, getting their food, uh, during the time, whenever we have in food drives. Uh, we could include that as well, uh, at, at, on top of um, that as well. So we could always. Incentivize people and um, uh, they are taking proper precautions. Um, so we could also um, do different things. Plus, yeah, I mean, work with the clinics. Also, we could also work with the uh, food drives and. Uh, that would also be a good idea because they could, if, if somebody doesn't want to get their food, they could just. Get their card and they could buy the food that is appropriate for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mary Yasu and I are both on the um, Georgia State's Prevention Research Center. And so, um, we are definitely pushing to do uh, those prevention activities in the apartment complexes. I like to say my medicine, bringing the medicine to the people. And that, that includes looking at how, when we do those food drives. How we can have the prescriptions, food prescriptions for people as well. Uh, council, did you have any other comments? Hearing none, uh, I guess nobody signed up for this because this is a new item. Yes, uh, Councilwoman Hopkins.
Um, I just wanted to say that I, I would encourage this. I, I would wait. I mean. I would do it, but I wouldn't go a lot higher in dollars until we see how the initial. Uh, say ten thousand dollars if it actually increases the rate of vaccinations. Because, you know, we do need to do everything we can. Um, a lot of us might have gotten very smug and overconfident. Because we were vaccinated, but we do have like students out at Emory right now because they have um, gotten COVID. And they are vaccinated. So vaccinated people are definitely getting it. I think ten percent of new cases are vaccinated people. But by far, the biggest majority of them are unvaccinated. Um, so it makes all of us safer, for every single person who gets vaccinated. So everything we do, everything we can do that encourages people. Um, as well as like if we are giving out gift cards to get the advertising for that translated. So to as many languages as we can afford to get it translated to. To make sure everybody knows that they can get free vaccine and possibly get a fifty-dollar gift card to use on whatever they want. Because um, that would encourage a lot of people as well. We have not been doing great compared to the rest of DeKalb County. When the rest of the county's numbers were going down, Clarkson was going up. So. Uh, I do want to encourage everything we can to get people out and get vaccinated and to. Still exercise caution, even if you are vaccinated.
And, and Councilwoman Hopkins, the, the, when I said the seventy-five, it wasn't all for gift cards. No, no ma'am, no ma'am, no ma'am. Um, no, no, it was, it was to, no. No, no, it was, it was, we look at the gift cards, but again, uh, like I was saying, that we're doing things. To be a collaborative, to do kind of round, um, you know, to do wraparound services. And so with that wraparound services, there would be some initial cost to go with that. So for example, if we do the food drives and we do um, the prevent, preventive uh, awareness. And you're talking about the translations, all of that would fit under that health. Um, initiative where we have that seventy-five thousand. And so, we can say of that seventy-five thousand, we can do ten for um. To start off with ten for the gift cards and then maybe another ten or fifteen specifically to do those programs. Um, to do those wraparound services as we're going to get people and encourage people to do the vaccinations. But also address the prevention piece, which is very critical because if we do not, and you both, both of us from a health perspective. We need to understand in terms of that trilogy, addressing the trilogy of obesity, diabetes, um, and hypertension. Those are all factors that weigh heavily as we see people um, getting COVID and the aspects of, of the impact of COVID. Yes, Vice Mary Yasu.
Uh, yes, I also wanna clarify my position on this. I, I definitely agree with the, with the idea of giving out. Um, incentives, but my thing is, we already have um, funds appropriated for food. Or for, like you said, for health things. So we could definitely include it in there and it's just um. So we don't have to create a new um. Class just for uh, gift cards only. So, um, the money could come out from any of those. And we could strengthen both uh, the food um, donation aspect of it. And also, we could also do with the medical um, preventative aspect of it. So we could do it both ways, but all, all I'm saying is, I think we already have funds that are already appropriated. We could certainly use it. And in the future, if an extra more money is needed, we could definitely supplement it. But all my, my feeling is, we already have money appropriated for medical purposes and also for food drives. That we could certainly tap in and uh, add it as to that program.
We didn't, we didn't do the health piece initially. We only just did the uh, the food. And the utility mortgage rental and the business assistance along with the city um, needs that we had. So that's why. Um, thank you, Councilman Carroll for bringing this up. But then if we just do that seventy-five, then that would cover everything. Um, in terms of the, the needs for going forward. Any other comments from the council? Yes.
Um, so, so in this, I'm getting a little concerned that this is getting, well, all I understand. You know, there, there are a number of factors that contribute to negative outcomes, you know, i.e. death. Uh, with COVID, um, you know, the, the interventions to obesity and diabetes and everything else. These are long-term solutions and vaccination is a short-term solution. So I just want to make sure that we don't end up. Bogging down something that we're just trying to incentivize people to go get a vaccine. Um, that uh, you know, by, by wrapping it with too much. Um, and, and, you know, maybe I'm misunderstanding exactly the, the, the details of how we're planning on doing that. But I think this is simply allowing, you know, clinics. But I think this is simply allowing, you know, clinics like Clarkson Committee Health Center, Ethnai Health, you know, the other clinics that are operating, an opportunity to get reimbursed, you know, if they offer a gift card incentive to someone who is a resident of Clarkson. So I just want to make sure we don't wrap this with, with a bunch of other things. You know, I mean, looking at the data right now, that's coming out in terms of the Delta variant. I think the CDC even just updated some of their recommendations for indoor gatherings to encourage masking for people with the vaccine. You know, we need to be moving pretty quickly with this. My recommendation would be that we go beyond the ten thousand. I think we've, we've kind of danced around that. I mean, even upwards of twenty-five thousand, we could put a time limit on that if we needed to. Just to make sure that we are doing anything that we can, anything in our power to encourage people to get vaccinated. And that's the number one way that people can protect themselves from COVID. So all these things are great. I'm speaking as someone with the, with the background, you know, and, and public health is a part of my studies, you know, as well. But I want to make sure, you know, if we were to focus on any one thing that's gonna keep people from dying, it's gonna be encouraging people to get the vaccine. So.
And thank you, Councilman Perkins. And so to your point, we are not saying that we're not going to do the encouragement. We've always said we've had to do the short-term activities, which are to get people vaccinated, but also as we're doing the programs that, you know, we're encouraging people to make sure in terms of, of their health and getting that message out, we're doing both. So it's, it's not to, it's parallel. It's not where you're doing, you have to do one or the other, just like we're doing.
No, I'm aware of that. My, and, and so again, my, my, my point is just to make sure that we don't, you know, sometimes it can be helpful to compartmentalize. And so I think if we wrap up, you know, gift cards, I'm not saying that, that both things can't happen in parallel. But I think if we're trying to coordinate a bunch of different moving parts into one giant thing, it can be a lot more effective to just sort of delegate some of that to some of our providers who are on the ground. So if that's what we're intending, then, then I think that's a great idea, you know, to say, hey, we're gonna reimburse it. I think once we start adding layers to that, you know, unless it's just promoting our local health clinics to have access to the vaccine, I think we, what we're doing is we're adding time to something that's very time sensitive. That's been one of the challenges to this whole pandemic to begin with is, you know, as you and I well know, and we've worked together on some of this stuff, as we constantly experienced delays, some of those were logistical, some of those were governmental, things way above our pay grade, you know, that slowed us down and, and people died because of that. And so my, my concern is just making sure that we don't, we're really careful to not add, you know, even if they're good layers, additional layers that could slow down anything that could, you know, possibly incentivize people to get the vaccine. So.
No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take away from what Councilman Carol was saying and what we see DeKalb doing. So it's not to interfere with that piece of it. So that, that can be separate and we can keep going down that track. Okay. Outstanding. And the other piece to that. Any other comments from the, the community?
Mr. Moore has his hand raised.
Yes, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, I think the city and the council and, and the intelligence of our residents has been tremendous. There's been a great vaccination effort that's gone on. The Director of Core Omar told me that the, the Clarkson has the highest percentage of vaccinated residents of any city in Georgia. And considering that DeKalb County is offering fifty dollar gift certificates or cards or gift cards for vaccinations, I, I don't think we need to double down on what they're doing. I, I think that we should plan for the future that as this pandemic does pick up again, and if we do go into a shutdown and we need rent relief and things like that, I think that it might be better served if we did put that money into long, long-range planning and not just incentivize the vaccinations. We've got, like I said, DeKalb County is, is adding an incentive and people can go to DeKalb County and get their shots. And Mark Perkins mentioned that this was a reimbursement in some way to the health clinics that are doing the vaccinations in Clarkson. I don't, I don't understand what that comment was. Maybe he can clarify how this is a reimbursement. I think it's still just an incentive that they're a pass-through that we're handing out to them. So I, I would encourage us to plan for the future and, and try to hold back on some of this. We'll probably need a lot more masks and, and hand washing, you know, sanitization items in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
The last thing I'll say is that we could start at ten thousand or a different number. And then if it's extremely successful, we could always scale it up. And if it's not successful, then we could always stop.
Yeah, that's fine. And that, that, that makes sense. Okay. Hearing nothing else from the public or the council, we, yes.
So may, so what is the direction here?
So council, do you just want to do the ten or do, as you can see, we didn't do the health component and we initially had like a, when we did the whole thing, we just wanted to do the short term, not knowing that it's gonna be almost August before we got the money. Where we talked about doing like seventy-five thousand towards health. So do we just want to do ten or do we want to do seventy-five thousand? And say of that ten, we do, and then that way we don't have to keep going back and forth with it.
I would agree with having seventy-five thousand dollar for medical related things, including vaccines. And we all have space for PPEs, but we could, we could also add one thing that says for vaccines or we could add it for medical preventative medicine, or I'm not sure what we could call it. But I think seventy-five thousand is a lot bigger than ten thousand. So we could just, that would, we could also use that could be used for other purposes as well. So I, I would say, I mean, we're not voting right now, but that I feel like it's, I think the council does not object on giving fifty dollar gift cards. The only question is whether we have a, an additional layer of that something that's for ten thousand or fifty or seventy-five thousand as Mayor Burke is saying. I would say let's do seventy-five thousand and let's, for now, let's limit the, the the expenses for cards, for gift cards to ten thousand. And I'm not sure how many that would buy, but I think that, that would be a good start. And from there, if there is a fifty percent or hundred percent increment in our vaccine rates, and that means it's working and we could, we could add, prevent it. And so I, I would really say, I think the, the, I mean, we will probably discuss it again on next week as well. But the direction that I personally see that would fit to the city manager is to add seventy-five thousand dollars line item and use up to ten thousand dollars for, for gift cards at this point.
Thank you.
I agree with Vice Mayor Yasu. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we did. Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. And the other piece of Mr. Gomez is that when we voted on this last time, we, if I recall, we reduced the utility assistance so that we were able to do the, the food. Because we had seventy-five, we had seventy-five thousand for food and then we reduced the amount. So if, just for going back in terms of the minutes, if you want to go ahead and go back and look at that again to see from a minutes perspective what we said, then that way you can make sure in terms of the actual allocations that we have the appropriate allocations identified.
I, I just want to say also, yeah, you're right. I don't see that line item in there. So for food drives, I think we agreed on fifty thousand at that time.
Madam Mayor, did we not, I'm sorry. Did we not pass the seventy-five thousand for healthcare?
No, we didn't.
Because initially.
Do we need to put that in? Okay.
Yeah. And so what happened? Yes.
I am interested in that thread that two different people were kind of going down as to whether or not this would be a reimbursement to our healthcare clinic for what they've already said. Or if it would be, we'd actually be purchasing the cards and promoting the events of like vaccination events and advertising it and, you know, trying to get people excited about the possibility of going down and winning a fifty dollar gift card when they get vaccinated. If, if it's something, and maybe Councilman Carol can answer this so far as what your intention is, is it something that we're doing to, moving forward or a reimbursement for just like let them do what they're gonna do and us just reimburse the clinics the cash?
Intention was for the city to purchase the cards and give them to the clinics to distribute to people who come and get vaccinated. So the money was not necessarily to go to the clinics. It was to incentivize people to come and get a vaccine because they would be immediately handed a fifty dollar debit card or gift card. Yeah, I'm not opposed if the city wanted to, you know, give them money to advertise or something like that. Yeah, we could definitely discuss that as part of seventy-five thousand. But the initial intention of this was just incentivize people to get shots into arms.
And if I may, I may have created a little confusion with that because I was getting technical in terms of, of how it would go through. So my assumption is what Councilman Carol just stated, the mechanism of getting, you know, money to a clinic, whether that's in the form of a gift card or anything else, obviously depends on a lot of different factors. So, so this would be moving forward, not retroactive from what I understood.
Madam Mayor, can I say something?
Yes.
I actually, I would leave this to the city manager in terms of working it out with the clinics or with our staff because I think this is just too much detail in towards implementing it. I, I have a feeling that the city manager will be able to figure out the best way to get this. All we could do is at this point, decide to direct the city manager and our staff to work on towards ten thousand dollars out of the seventy-five thousand dollars. From there, I have a strong feeling that the city manager will be able to do it. If necessary, whether there is going to be documentation required, I think the city manager should be able to, to be able to do it, not just hand out money to anybody, to any organization. There is going to be accountability needed. So let's leave that to the city manager, whether he's gonna do a reimbursement or whether he wants to do because he also is gonna keep track of the documentation. So it's not just handing out money. So we need to be cognizant of that as well. So we cannot micromanage this stuff. We are just directing the city manager and let's, let's leave it at that, I believe.
Thank you. And Councilman Hassan?
I think you guys are missing the point. Clinics are compensated. Nobody works for free. So we don't, I mean, I, I don't see giving money back to the clinics. You'd rather give it to the people, you know, to, so, I mean, ten thousand dollars, I, I mean, it's just nothing. It's hundred, one hundred and fifty people. But clinics, they are compensating, they get grants and they don't work for free. So I don't see giving the money back. Thank you.
Comments? Hearing none. I think we, we have direction and, and did that clarify everything for you, Mr. Gomez?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, just to my comment, I, reimbursements, never a good idea. Well, in this case, not a good idea. I don't see the clinics kind of going out and spending even five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars on gift cards. We would certainly purchase them and then distribute and, and really make it a, really for attempt to as much as possible for Clarkson residents. But we will manage it and get with the clinics and see the most efficient, effective way. But like, but I'm fairly certain that we would purchase them and manage them. And as has been stated, we do have to track every penny. So, and the fact that I worked as an auditor for most of my career, we definitely track every penny.
Thank you. And thank you for that. And we, we will allow you to do your job. So thank you very much. With that being said, there's no other items. And at this time, we will adjourn the meeting. So I'll go ahead and close the meeting out. Have a wonderful day. And just a couple of reminders, on, on Tuesday, August second, we, or August third, we will have our night out. So that's why we're not having council meeting that day. And we will have council meeting on August fourth. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gomez, it's gonna be our first in-person one, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Also available via Zoom.
So we're gonna have a hybrid. So we'll, we'll make sure that we have that available to you. But again, so just as a reminder, there won't be a council meeting on Tuesday. We're doing night out at Mylan Park and we will have council meeting on that Wednesday. With that being said, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone for your participation and have a great evening. Take care.